All right, good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ryan, if you would read our community prayer.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift up prayers for all the citizens of our community that we've been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Ryan. All right, the first item on our agenda this evening, as always, is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Either one, either one's up.
Mary Dormer, 162 Plymouth Street. I just have a comment about the pilot agreements. The pilots are not reducing taxes. They are being used as a down payment for big-ticket purchases and obligating the public to pay increased taxes to finish paying off unnecessarily expensive projects, laying a heavier tax burden on the population while the project owners pay pennies on the dollars. So I would ask you not to approve any pilot agreements tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dormer. Is there anyone else? All right, see no one. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is a presentation of citations to Sharon and Ron Clark. And, you know, this is probably one of the more pleasurable things I think this board gets to do, Sharon and Ron. I don't think these citations can even begin to show our thanks for all the many years you folks have given to this town in so many different ways. We owe you an incredible debt of gratitude, and I am not sure I can find the words to express that, but I hope that you'll accept that gratitude on behalf of the town. I know we all appreciate all you both have done. And I want to give the rest of the board an opportunity to say something if they'd like to.
All right. Yeah, I like to, I've known Ron and Sharon for a long time and served with Ron on the Finance Committee many years ago. So again, thank you for your many years and many hours of dedication and volunteer service and the leadership that you both use to help shape Carver into a great community. Over the years, you sacrificed much of your time to make Carver a better place for everyone, and that's a debt that cannot be repaid. And I hope you enjoy your time off.
Anyone else?
Yes, sorry, I'd like to echo the same thoughts. I haven't had the pleasure of working with Sharon on various committees, but Ron and I have worked together. Ron was on the Finance Committee, he was on the Board of Selectmen, and I think it's been said before, you really can't put a list together of all the contributions that the two of you have done for the town in order for us to thank you properly. So just please consider this a hearty thank you for all your efforts.
Anyone else?
Yep, I just want to echo the same thoughts. Thank you both very much. It's a lot of time and effort. As we all know, that serving in public office is not always easy. But we do want to thank you seriously. We appreciate all the time you put in.
Thank you. I also want to thank Ron and Sharon Clark. I've known them for many years as well and served on the board with Ron. I did not have the honor of serving with Sharon, but many, many years, I know how that is. I know how it took away from your family and also gave back to your family, I'm sure. I'm sure they learned a lot through you, and the town's a better place for you. So thank you both.
Thanks. I know we have a couple of other town committee members that have worked with Ron and Sharon in the past. Would either of you like to say anything?
For those of you who need to be reminded of who I am, my name is Stephen Gray. I am the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and sitting to my left is our Vice Chair, Fran Mello. I could not let this evening go by without making a few remarks concerning most especially Sharon, but also, we are grateful, as you just indicated, for the service that has been provided by Mr. Clark over the years. But I speak tonight primarily with regard to Sharon Clark, who sat on my left for many years and I on her left for many years before I assumed the chair. For those who may be counting at this point, and I don't think Ms. Clark wants to, she was a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Carver for 31 years. Let me say that again, 31 years. She has been an uncommonly dedicated and selfless public servant, who has not only served as both chairperson of the ZBA and vice chairperson, as I just said, but also as chairperson of the RDA and as a member of the Library Committee as well. But it was specifically the Zoning Board of Appeals to which Ms. Clark had a particular attachment. She is a longtime title examiner, as probably most of you know, whose services have been sought by numerous attorneys and companies throughout the years. She is as knowledgeable about land use and land issues as anyone I know, especially insofar as the Town of Carver is concerned. As an attorney myself, I am not in the least embarrassed to say that the depth and breadth of her experience exceeds my own in this field. And I have leaned on her numerous times, numerous times, for her guidance and wisdom. Ms. Clark has remained humble during this three-decade-plus service for the Zoning Board of Appeals. She has trained, if you will, many ZBA members over the years, including this one. She has, with good grace and humor, suffered the slings and arrows of many disappointed petitioners through the years, while always being true to the mission of the board. Many controversial cases she has been a part of, including illegal in-law apartment matters, the application of a local pharmacy to be approved for liquor sales near an elementary school, solar field requests in residential neighborhoods, and 40B projects for affordable housing. It's quite a portfolio. And while sitting in judgment on dozens and dozens of cases through these many years, and here's the most amazing thing, ladies and gentlemen, the ZBA has not been reversed by a court of law during her entire 31-year tenure, not once. I ask all of you, and those watching at home, to think about that for a minute. Think of the amount of legal expense and the usage of resources, town resources, that the town has saved because of her service. It's considerable. Now, this is not to say that Ms. Clark or the board have not made any mistakes during her 31-year tenure. From time to time, we may have made a little error here or there, but nothing ever rising to the level of reversible legal error. She has helped navigate some very rocky waters over the years and has always captained the ship of state to safe harbors as the ZBA struggles to interpret, sometimes confusing local bylaws. And we know they can be confusing, don't we? And we also have to comply with state statutes and sometimes even federal and constitutional The board, I dare say, Ms. Clark's board during her tenure, has professionalized zoning in this town and has kept its rural nature intact. This is an issue which concerns all of us. As I have described, it is a heavy portfolio. The learning curve is considerable, as our most recent members have discovered, and I think Ms. Mello, who's been with us now a few years, can speak to her own experience. We do not come onto a board such as the ZBA and say merely, what would be in the best interests of the town, or the best interests of this one, or that one. That's not what we do. Our decision-making process is far, far more nuanced than that. So in conclusion, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for your time this evening, I wanted to hearken back to something that John Kennedy said not too long ago. Ask not what you can do for your country. I should repeat. Ask not what your country can do for you, but rather ask instead what you can do for your country. Both of these people, Mr. and Mrs. Clark, have lived true to John Kennedy's exhortation in this regard. We should appreciate them always for their selflessness and for their want to do public good. We know that it's very difficult to get people in town to volunteer, and we have quite a few vacancies, and we're always struggling to fill those vacancies. They filled their portfolio, their public duty beautifully, and as I said at the beginning, in a selfless manner. So I wanted to come here tonight and be heard, have you hear me, and understand how important she has been not only to the Town of Carver and Mr. Clark as well, but also how important she has been to the Zoning Board of Appeals and to me personally, as I have struggled to navigate these waters with her.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Ms. Dorman, do you have anything you'd like to add?
There is no follow-up to that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, Savory Moore, Chairman Pro Tem of the Redevelopment Authority. I did not have the pleasure of working on any committee with Ron either. I've been in this room with the Select Board when Ron was a member of it, so I've seen him in action, and I'm well aware of the work he's done also on the Finance Committee, and I know our finances are in pretty good shape for this town. So that has to go to everyone on the board. I have worked with Sharon on the Redevelopment Authority for the last six years or so, and I just want to say that the last three years have probably been the busiest that the RDA has had in quite some time with the North Carver Project, and there were a lot of moving parts, and a lot of good things came out of that, and none of that would have been possible without all the hard work that Sharon put into this. She kept all of the different groups together and made sure that all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted in getting to the endpoint that we arrived at about a year ago. So I just wanted to say that without Sharon, the situation with the RDA and with North Carver would certainly be a lot different. So Sharon, thank you very much. You taught me a lot, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay. Before we present the citations, I just, once again, Ron and Sharon, I know we appreciate everything you've done. Ron, you were a longtime beacon on this board, and we appreciate everything you folks have done. All right, moving right along. We have an appointment on the Conservation Commission this evening. We have three applicants for the one appointment for a term ending June 30th, 2026, Patricia Cooney, Anne Chadwick Diaz, and Carl Miller. The board has all their applications in their packet. I know you've had a chance to review them. I want to give each member, each applicant, a chance to address the board, and let's see, why don't we go in order that they're on our agenda? Patricia Cooney, would you like to? Welcome. Thanks for coming this evening.
Yes, very nice to be back.
And if you just want to tell us a little bit about why you're interested in this appointment?
So, once again, you know, I grew up here. I have a lot of, you know, memories here. I like the town, the way it's been, you know, staying a small-town feel. I understand that we need to get, you know, growth so we can have lower taxes and things like that, but we have to pay attention to the small-town feel of the town. I have done some research and found out that they have a Massachusetts Association for the Conservation Commissioners. So I'm going to try to sign up for some of those classes and find out more information about what I can do, you know, if I don't get appointed tonight, so then I can come back when there's another opening and be able to say, well, I've looked into this, I can, you know, offer more things. But it's pretty much the same thing. You know, I grew up here, I want what's best for the town, I want to protect the growth of the town, but, you know, I want to make sure that the water is clean, the earth is taken care of, and we have a lot of big companies looking at the town and might not have the best towns' interests at heart. So that's something that I really feel like, you know, I'm open to see what we can do to grow the town, but I also pay attention to the natural resources that we have here. We have a very beautiful, pristine area, and we have to take care of that, you know, so. That's it.
Great, thank you. I want to give the board a chance to ask any questions they may have, but just before we do that, I just want to make sure, so the Conservation Commission meets on the first and third Wednesdays of each, every month, well, the first and third Wednesdays of every month, and they have site visits at 10:00 in the morning on the Wednesdays that they have meetings. You're available to make all of those?
Yep.
Okay. All right, great. Other questions from the board? Is yours?
Yes, thank you. So, thank you for your application. I just had a couple of quick questions. One was if you've had any experience in conservation of any kind and whether, what your knowledge is of the local and state wetland laws?
I don't have any specific, you know, trainings with things, but like I said, they have the website that is for the Conservation Commission Association, that, you know, you got to get your feet wet at some point in time. Even all of you guys have said that there's plenty of positions open, and I'm a very willing person to be able to learn the proper way to conduct myself by taking some of these courses. And I do know a good amount of stuff about, you know, preservation of areas. I've lived here, and I farm my own property, and, you know, I know how companion planting and how important different ecosystems are and a whole symbiotic relationship with other things. And whatever I don't know, I'm pretty good at looking things up and learning stuff. So I, you know, I don't have any doubts that I'd be able to do the research and figure out the best way to go about doing things.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Nope.
I have the same question as Ms. Jones.
All right, I guess we're good. Thank you, Ms. Cooney.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda this evening is Anne Chadwick Diaz. Welcome. Thanks for coming in this evening.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate you all taking the time to consider my candidacy and interest in this position. So why am I here? I've lived here for 33 years. I love this town. I am really here out of passion. I served on school committee for six years in this town. I hold degrees in science and technology.
Excuse me, could you speak into the mic, Anne?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Can everyone hear me? Is that better?
Yes.
Sorry about that. I am an infamous load talker, so I apologize. I worked in Boston for a long time for Fidelity Investments as a user experience researcher. I have my resume, does everyone have that?
Yes, we all read it.
And a few years ago, I stopped working for Fidelity and started my own consultancy. So I'm an independent consultant, and I have more time, and there are a few things that I'm really passionate about. One is public education, and that's what really drew me to school committee, and the other is environmental conservation and land stewardship. So I've been actively working with Wildlands Trust in Plymouth. They are a private land conservancy that hold conservation land across 53 communities in southeastern Massachusetts. I do everything from blazing trails to training other volunteers to understanding things. I will not lie to you and say that I have memorized the entire Wetland Protections Act, because that is a 245-page document that I'm sure you all know. I am familiar with it, and I do understand it, and I'm dedicated to learning it. I think a lot of what everyone does in these committees is learn on the job. I certainly know that was true with school committee, and I think the same would be true for the Conservation Commission. I know Carver also has its own bylaws in environment and wetlands protection. And, you know, honestly, my son, I raised my family here, he hopes to have by my house and have his children here, and I really want to preserve the environment that he was able to grow up in. I live near Gene Cobb's bogs. I run on them my whole 33 years, mountain biked on them, and I watched them transform from working cranberry bogs, and now they are evolving into natural wetlands again. I also have solar panels on some of my bogs, and I also go on Hannula's bogs. But I love the environment here, and I think, you know, one passion for me has really been that I want to preserve our precious resources, our aquifers, our cranberry bogs, our space, our town, and I want an environment left, you know, not just for my children, but for my grandchildren and generations to come. So this is a real passion for me. I would love to be able to serve the town in this way, because I think, I'm so happy there are other people interested in this role. We need more people that are willing to do what you all do, which is spend hundreds or thousands of hours dedicated to trying to improve our town. So I would love to be able to do that. If I'm not chosen, I'm going to still be working on that passion anyway in one way or another, but I do appreciate your interest in listening to me, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Well, we appreciate your interest in volunteering for the town, and I'll just ask you the same question that I asked Ms. Cooney. The Conservation Commission does meet on the first and third Wednesdays of each month, and they have site visits at 10:00 in the morning on the Wednesdays that they have meetings. Are you able to make all those?
Absolutely, and anything more?
Okay, great, thank you. Questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Thank you. So you obviously have some experience in conservation, having volunteered for the Wildlands Trust. Do you have any particular knowledge of our local wetlands bylaw?
I have certainly looked at Carver wetlands bylaws. I cannot claim that I have expertise, like, expert experience in understanding those. I'm anxious to learn more. I do consider myself a fast learner. I have looked over them, just like I have looked over the, you know, the Wetlands Protection Act, which was, you know, established in 1972. I know that Carver is what, almost half wetlands are property? So this is a very important topic, so it's something I want to continue to learn about. I probably can never get expert enough in that, and also the town bylaws as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Everyone good? Mr. Carter?
No, and it might not be a question for the applicants, because I know Ms. Cooney has clearly demonstrated a passion for conservation and farming issues, and your resume is, for what I know about conservation, quite extensive. But my question has to do, and maybe this is more a question for Savory, as far as the training that someone gets when they come on the Conservation Committee. The two applicants have stated that they have a willingness to learn, but is there a, I want to say, versus looking online and researching things, is there a structured course training for anyone who gets on the Conservation Committee?
Mr. Ward, sorry to put you on the spot. Come up to the microphone and just answer Mr. Carter's question, if you don't mind?
Hi again, Savory Moore, Chairman of the Carver Conservation Commission. We do not have a structured course that people can take. As Ms. Cooney mentioned, there are the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissioners, the MAC, has courses, and they have seminars that are interspersed around the state, the Commonwealth, and they're a very useful tool. But the Wetlands Protection Act is your Bible, and the Carver bylaws themselves are the addendum to that. So it's a lot of learning on the job, it's a lot of understanding and deliberating with the members during the course of a meeting. But as far as any structured courses that people are required to take, that doesn't happen. As you mentioned to both applicants, so far, the site visits that occur on the morning of the meetings are probably the most important part of what we do, because that gives you a three-dimensional view of what you're looking at. You know, we look at plans which are two-dimensional, and you really can't get the entire scope of what you're looking at, even outside the boundaries of where the project is. It's going and seeing the site that is really the most informative of how you make your decisions. So, you know, it's just basically going and looking at the site visit and listening to the applicant and knowing what our bylaws are and getting a whole picture of what it is. But it's more on-the-job training than anything else.
Okay. Mr. Carter, is that?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right, anything else for Ms. Chadwick Diaz? Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
All right, next, our final applicant for this position this evening is Carl Miller. Mr. Miller, thank you again for coming in this evening.
Oh, thank you for having me.
And just like to tell the board why you're interested?
Well, a lot like the other applicants, I'm a lifelong member of Carver, and we all have a passion for the wetlands and making sure everything is taken care of the way it's supposed to be. I don't have extensive training in conservation, but working in the construction field, I've been in front of many conservation committees as well as other boards of town, so I'm familiar with the process as far as what the laws are, and like, I can't quote a chapter and verse, but I'm very familiar with them. I've spent a lot of time looking at engineered plans as well as plot plans and everything, so my goals, I only have two goals, and that would be that the laws are followed, both state and local, and that the property owners are treated fairly.
Thank you. As I asked the previous applicants, you're available for the Conservation Commission meetings on the first and third Wednesdays of each month?
Yes, I am.
And the site visits at 10:00 in the morning?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Thank you. I'm just going to ask the questions anyways. You've sort of answered it, but I want to ask it the same way, just if you have any experience in conservation, however indirectly.
I experienced, like I said, in the construction field, I've done a fair amount of work with conservation committees, so I'm familiar with the different laws of the town, especially the state. Like I said, I can't quote them chapter and verse to you right now, but it's, they're all in black and white, so if there's any question, it's easy enough to figure out the answer to, and whatever I don't have the answer to, I lean on, I would lean on the other members of the committee to help me out there.
So you're not familiar with our local wetlands?
Oh, yeah. I've read through our local wetland stuff, yeah. Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Anything else from the board? Anyone? Nope? Okay, no. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
All right. All right, I'll open it up from just two discussions to the board. Is there any discussion, or if not, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Anne Chadwick Diaz.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to appoint. All right. We have a motion and a second to appoint Anne Chadwick Diaz. Are there any other motions?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Carl Miller for the Conservation Commission.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Carl Miller. Are there any other motions before the board this evening? All right. Well, okay. Why don't we act on Ms. Hewitt's motion first? We have a motion and a second to appoint Anne Chadwick Diaz. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
All right, so that's a two to three vote. We also have a motion to appoint Carl Miller. All in favor of the motion to appoint Carl Miller?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right. So by a three to two vote, Mr. Miller is appointed to the Conservation Commission. Congratulations, and we appreciate everyone's applications, since you were all well-qualified. And unfortunately, there was only one opening, so. Please don't forget to get sworn in by the town clerk. She's on vacation this week, so you'll have to wait till next week to get sworn in.
Can I shake up the bill quick? Like, she has so much experience with this stuff, and he's been on so many boards, and you guys sit here and say that we don't have people to fill positions. She hasn't...
Ma'am, I'm sorry. There was only, there was only one opening, and there were three applicants. So, all right, we are going to move along to our next agenda discussion, which is a discussion and possible vote to approve payment in lieu of tax agreement, Sincarfa Carver LLC, and subordination agreement for Sincarfa Capital LLC, assessors map 123, lot 13, 104 Tremont Street. Welcome. Welcome back.
Hi.
Thanks for coming in this evening.
No problem. Joe Roach, Town Assessor. So this is the fourth solar pilot that was approved at town meeting.
Mr. Chair?
All right, folks, if we could just have quiet, please, or please, if you would like to have a conversation, please get outside the room. Sorry, Mr. Roach.
No worries. So this is the fourth solar pilot that was approved at town meeting. All the other three pilots were, you know, redoing existing pilots, so this is a brand-new one. Like you said, it's at 104 Tremont Street between the town of Carver and Sincarfa Carver LLC. It's expected to run starting 2025 fiscal year, going through fiscal 2044. Starts at $97,861 and ends at $156,446 in the final year, for a total revenue of $2,499,838. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Mr. Ryan?
So what accounts do these go into, and then how would the money be used in the future for this? It's a brand-new one, so as we receive the funds, then where...
So, I mean, this is recorded on page three of the recap as a local receipt.
Okay.
In my role, I don't have any say. I have money spent in the future. That's done through the budget process, so I know there's financial policies regarding solar pilots. That's not my wheelhouse. I value them. You guys spend the money.
Okay. So they'll just come into the local receipts as they're collected, and then as we make decisions in the future, we can decide on how to spend that money?
Exactly.
Okay.
Anything else? Question?
No, I was just going to say that's a very good question. And thank you for your answer.
No problem. Nothing else on the board? All right. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the payment in lieu of tax agreement for Sincarfa Carver LLC and the subordination agreement for Sincarfa Capital LLC, assessors map 123, lot 13, 104 Tremont Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda is an update from the Finance Director on the Vadar software implementation. Ms. Moklin, thanks for coming in this evening.
Not exactly sure what you guys are looking for. I didn't have any questions prepared for me in advance, but we are going forward with implementation. Everything seems to be going very well.
We could just move that.
The assessing part of it has been completed. Our tax bills have gone out. We're working on getting everybody in the reporting phase. We're paying our bills through the system. We're taking receipts in through the system. So everything seems to be going on target.
Okay. Mr. Carter, I think this is something you would ask to be on the agenda, so why don't you shout out for us?
Just, I guess, a little bit of background. When you, we started with the new system with regards to modules, is, are we bringing over everything right now but the school?
Correct.
Okay. And that's great to hear that the assessing is working out well. And are we going live with the, I should say, the cutoff from the old system to the new system is July 1?
Yes.
Okay, so we're just, we're just going to bring over balances from the old system into the new system and just go forward?
Correct.
Okay. With regards to payables, receivables, are we keeping, I think we went back a little bit on history, and I wasn't sure. You talked about having books and binders of some of the old history. Are we migrating any of the old data, say, one year's worth, into the new system, or is it just a beginning balance going forward?
Only the tax data.
So payables, vendor payables, things like that from...
It's going to show up in our budget worksheets when we're doing our budgets for FY '25, so you'll have '24 and '23 history. But if you go into actually look at a payables report, it won't be there. That's why we downloaded all of the reports.
Okay. So will we have the old system for a year, just if you need to go back and look at something?
Correct.
A year or more than a year, do you think?
One year back.
One year back. And is payroll part of this conversion?
It is. We're still staying with Harper's, but Harper's is going to convert so that we're not having to do manual journal entries for the payroll. They're giving us a text file, and the text file is going to get uploaded, so we just have to confirm that Harper's numbers on the text file match what we have been handed by the department heads, and then it gets downloaded. Less room for error.
Okay. And any integration with other, the examples would be, I think, isn't sometimes there maybe funds received for maybe permits by a different department or something? Are there accounting attributes that either the police or fire or other departments use on Vadar? I think they had some kind of access to the old system. Is that correct?
They have access currently for the year.
For in Vadar, they have the access?
Yes, they have software and Vadar.
And last, it would be the monthly reports that would get generated?
Yes.
When do you think we'll start seeing those?
We have the final upload that Vadar sent to me today for the beginning balances for July 1. I made a few corrections, and it should be up and running by the end of the week.
So ballpark, when do you think we'll have a full set of July reports?
I would say by the end of September. We want to make sure that the reports are, you know, populated properly before we start sending them out for departments to question.
And all budgets are loaded from the town meeting?
Correct.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board on the Vadar software? Mr. Fantasy, can you just update us on how this is working for the various departments? Any issues that we should know about, or...
There's been hiccups along the way, but they're working them out. It seems like it's a slow process for them to learn, you know, the new system versus the old system, but they're coming up to speed now, so it's a lot better than it was two weeks ago.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You let us know if there's any issues we need to be aware of?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, one last question.
Yes.
And completion, completion of the Vadar conversion, is that targeted for the end of September as well?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Everyone good?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Moklin. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Next this evening is the appointment of a full-time police officer, Krista Jean Foren, and the appointment of special police officers Mark Gabriel and Caitlin Malani. Malani, Malaney. Chief? Welcome back. Thanks for coming in this evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me. On a nice occasion to be on this. So as I get into this, I've got some prepared words, but I just want to go through a little bit of the process of how we got here and where we're at today, and then I'll speak a little bit more about the officer that we're asking you to appoint. And 16 font is not big enough anymore, so I'm just with you. I thought it was, but it's not.
I gave up with the 16 font a long ago.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me this time to speak to you about the future of the Carver Police Department. If your call is past April, voters approved a ballot question which removed the police department from civil service. This action was taken as one of the action points cited in the 2018 MRI strategic plan for the department. It was taken in consultation with the police union and with its support. Coming out of civil service allows us more local control regarding who is hired to become a Carver police officer. We now have the ability to have our own test on our timeframe instead of waiting, sometimes for considerable time, for a list of candidates from civil service. Another excellent option exiting civil service provides is to recruit trained officers who might be good fit for the town of Carver. In the past, under civil service, this option would be called a lateral transfer. However, with changes to civil service rules and the difficult job many departments are having in finding good officers, these transfers are in effect not occurring. No longer being confined by the civil service rules allows Carver to recruit good officers who are already trained. Earlier this summer, we posted that Carver was looking for good officers who might want to transfer to the department. We received applications from 14 applicants. For the first time ever, officers from our department were able to be part of the hiring process. Our hiring process, our hiring policy creates a preliminary screening panel made up of our deputy chief, sergeants, and officers. And I want to take a moment to thank them. We had almost half the department participate in this process, being involved in hiring the officers that are going to come into their department to work with them. The panel conducts a screening of the applicants and then recommends a group of candidates to move forward in the hiring process. I feel this is a very important part to give our offices, our current offices, the ability to be part of the hiring process, as they're the ones that are going to work with them on a day-to-day basis and require them for backup. The panel worked hard and narrowed the group down to six officers. After interviews with Mr. Townsend, Mr. Fantasy, Ms. Weston, Deputy Chief Samantel, and myself, we've narrowed that search to one officer, whom I'm presenting to you tonight for appointment as a full-time police officer. I'm proud to present to you Officer Krista Jean Foren. If you don't mind, I'm going to ask her to come up and join me.
As we...
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Officer Foren is currently a police officer of the city in Dubedford. She has worked for Dubedford for just over three years. During her time there, she has become an active member of the overdose outreach team, which is similar to our PCO outreach team program. She's become a trained sexual assault investigator and is part of the youth community crisis intervention team, as well as being part of the mental health condition outreach team. Officer Foren also has a passion for working with the elderly population, and prior to becoming a police officer, was a protective service supervisor for Bristol Elder Services. She holds a bachelor's degree from Nichols College with a concentration in criminal justice and psychology. She completed her college internship at Plymouth Police Department. During her background check, her current supervisor spoke very highly of her and described her as, quote, "the perfect person to speak and help the elderly and children," end quote, "her work ethic is outstanding." A little fact, her grandfather Theodore Halliwell was also a police officer in Carver, and she grew up in Plymouth County. After interviewing her, reviewing her background check, and hearing from members of the preliminary screening panel, I'm very confident that Officer Foren will make an excellent addition to our team at CPD. I would like to formally request the Honorable Select Board vote to appoint Officer Krista Jean Foren as a full-time police officer for the Carver Police Department. Thank you. I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you. I just want to say, I think Ms. Foren's background and her experience make her a great candidate for the Carver Police Department, so I certainly support her.
Thank you.
I think she's going to be a great addition to the department, so thank you. Anything from the board?
I'll make a motion to appoint full-time police officer Krista Jean Foren.
Second.
Second. Oh.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it, and I'm really excited to continue the work over here that Carver is doing and build on some of, you know, what my grandfather started as well, so thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your service.
Chief, will you take a quick photo?
Sure. And I want to thank everybody. I like when there's a fight to second my motions. That's awesome.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Since we had success with the first one, I'll try for a second one. Glasses again. We're good? So tonight, I'd like to request the appointment of two additional special police officers. As we've discussed in the past, special police officers bolster the number of officers who are available to work police details, controlling traffic at rural construction sites, and providing security at the fair in Ederville. And they do so much more, too. They're also out there in uniform and prepared to go at a moment's notice, as all of our officers are. In order to do this tonight, I've identified two candidates for possible appointment. Both have completed the MBTC-required basic training, the Bridge Academy, and a ten-year, their yearly in-service training to maintain their proficiency. Both have worked within public safety for many years. And both will be replacing two of our special police officers that are moving on to other things, one who is focusing more on her full-time job in Kingston as a dispatcher, and another one who has been, Chris Mahoney, has been appointed as a full-time police officer. The two people I'd like to bring before you tonight, Mark Gabriel. Mark is currently the Director of Human Resources for the Plymouth County Sheriff's Office and a deputy sheriff. He has also been a special police officer for the Plumpton Police Department for many years, and recently he served on the Plumpton Police Chief Search Committee. Mark has worked alongside our offices for many years at the King Rogers Fair in his capacity as a special police officer from Plumpton. And next is Caitlin Malaney. Caitlin is a deputy sheriff of the Plymouth County Sheriff's Office, where she was a member of their mounted unit until it was disbanded, and as well as working security for inmates who went to the hospital and other details. She also spent three years as a special police officer for Rockland PD. Both offer experience in training as law enforcement officers that will be valuable to the mission of the police department. I would like to recommend that they both be appointed as special police officers for the town. Thank you.
Chief, can you tell me, how many specials do we have right now?
We have 10.
We have 10.
So we have 10, but we're losing two, and these will replace them.
Those will keep the same number, at 10?
Yes.
And you mentioned the, especially the help they provide at King Rogers Fair. How many specials on a weekly basis customarily work the fair? Any idea?
So we were able to fill the fair this weekend with primarily our offices, except for Monday, because of those specials, so we had them, I don't remember the exact number, but I would say at least five of them on Saturday were specials.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the board?
Sure.
Mr. Carter?
And maybe I should know this, but I don't. On the specials, roughly how many, if you are a special police officer, how many hours do you work a week average?
How many hours you work a week?
How many hours, yes.
So it really varies on, because details go to our full-time officers first, and then if they're not filled, they go to the specials, so it really can vary. There are some weeks when you can see them working probably 20 hours, and some weeks when there's no hours available because of other officers took the jobs.
So they work a full-time job, and then when they have time, they work here as specials?
Yes, that's correct.
And is the natural progression that they become full-time police officers here, or is that...
No, it's a good, now that we're out of civil service, it's actually a good way to have a farm team, but it's not necessarily, like, Mark Gabriel, he's the full-time director of HR at the sheriff's department. He's not going to leave that job and become a police officer with us, but in the time he has off, the weekends and at night, he performs details. I can't speak for Ms. Mulaney. I don't know what her future plans are right now, but she, you know, if she decided she wanted to become a police officer, it's a good step in that direction for us, now that we're out of civil service.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from the board?
I'll make a motion to appoint special police officers Mark Gabriel and Caitlin Mulaney.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you very much, and as always, I thank you for your continued support. We could not perform the mission that we do without the support of the people in this room, and we're very grateful for that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
We appreciate it. Chief, if you could just pass on our thanks for all the hard work at the fair this past weekend.
Thank you. It went very well, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is a discussion and possible vote to accept the donation of land located at 56 Fosdick Road Assessor's Map and Lot 57-2-C. Mr. Bott, you'd like to discuss this a little bit?
Thanks very much. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Tom Bott. I'm the town planner here in Carver, Mass. And back in June, perhaps July, we were approached by, I'm going to go with Joyce because I'm going to mispronounce her last name if I try to say Bacchioli, Roby Propane, about 56 Fosdick Road. This is a piece of property that the Tremont Enterprise Corporation has owned for years, and they wanted to know about giving the property to the town. I suggested they write the select board and make their request, and we have since followed up on that. Last week, we went on a site visit. Gary Flaherty, who is our very able conservation agent, and I took a site visit to take a look at the property. It's on the map behind you. It's in your packets as well. So, the property's got about 78-foot of frontage on Fosdick Road, and as you get onto the property, about 200 or some odd feet in, we run into a wetland area and a stream crossing that bisects the property. We couldn't quite get on the property from the front because there was a fence across it, so we managed to bushwhack our way around the back through some bog roads to find the piece of property, and it's largely upland with the exception on the back side and on the front side with the wetland in the middle. My first thought when I heard Roby Propane is, well, perhaps we should do a 21E, an environmental assessment of the property before having any further discussion, but the property hasn't been used for anything like that. It's an extra lot from a potential subdivision, I would imagine, the way that it's shaped with the frontage there. But Gary Flaherty and I both thought it had potential for a town piece of property as open space or some other potential use at some point in the future. We don't know, but certainly, it's a, for the most part, untouched piece of property. It has potential for maybe, you know, a walking area, walking trails, some of that effect, and obviously, if someone's looking to donate it, the price is right. As far as accepting a piece of property, it's been my experience to accept a piece of property, either it has to be accepted by the Conservation Commission or at town meeting. So, your discussion tonight might be recommending this for the warrant for town meeting or perhaps referring to the Conservation Commission for their consideration. But Gary and I both thought that it was, you know, a nice piece of property and had potential for passive recreation. You wouldn't put a ballpark here. You wouldn't put anything like that there, but it's as far as a space to walk in the woods and, you know, maybe look for, you know, tadpoles and things like that in the spring. It has the potential, like I said, it's a clean piece of property, nicely situated, and there didn't appear to be anything outstanding, any red flags that we noted in our site visit.
And just for clarity for the folks at home, this is in no way a buildable lot. There's no way it'd become a buildable lot for a home or anything like that, correct?
Unlikely, and I'm not on the Conservation Commission, but typically, you can fill up to 5,000 square feet of a piece of property for access, and based on the size of the wetland there, I don't think that you could fill, that's probably larger than 5,000 square feet someone would have to fill to try to build something on that. So, I would venture to say, based on my rudimentary knowledge, that no, it's not really buildable. That stretch on the front, it's about 78 feet wide. It's about 200 feet deep. You could put, you know, a couple parking spaces along the street or something like that, let people walk through the property, or just leave it as it is and sign it as town property.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Yes, thank you. And just to answer your question even further, because you've actually been there and I haven't, I just wanted to point out that the assessor's sheet calls it unbuildable.
I did see that, but things have a way of changing sometimes, which is why I just wanted to ask the question.
Well, but you have to have access and...
Right.
Well, as I have said on numerous occasions, Will, again, tonight, the assessor's information is based on valuing a piece of property for the purposes of taxation, not for buildability, not for anything else. It's just, this is the property, this is what it's valued, this is what we tax it at. So, thank you for the assessors for doing that, of course.
And the other point I wanted to make is the stream that you noticed in there, there's that little blue line connecting the water body. It goes, at one point, that stream probably goes underground because the whole of the Great Meadow area was built on a river, that's a stream, which is why it flooded in 2010 when we had those double hundred-year storms. The water kept coming up in people's backyards and going down and coming up. So, in my opinion, it's a perfect piece to purchase for that neighborhood so that they will have something the Conservation Commission can make into a walking area. There's enough upland to walk, but potentially not enough to build. And I just wanted to add as an addendum on Woodhaven, it's not adjacent to it, but it's very near it. There's another piece of land similar that hasn't been made into walking trails yet, but really will be soon, I'm sure. It's just nice to have a neighborhood walking space, and I don't know approximately how many miles that might be in there, but even if you have a circular thing, you go around a couple of times, it would be nice to have that in the middle of the neighborhood.
Nor do I. So, on the, this is our town GIs that I zoomed out, and so where the cursor is at on that arrow, that line is the stream historically that goes through the bogs. And one of the things in our open space plan does talk about preserving properties that are tributaries to some of the rivers here, so it has that potential as well in the line with the open space plan.
Thank you. That's right.
All right. Anything else?
The taxes we collect is $427. Is that correct? It's very low, so we're not losing any money in tax dollars. So, I guess the question would be, does it go to the Conservation Commission or town meeting?
Well, you could do it at town meeting and put it in care of the custody of conservation in the town meeting warrant.
Okay.
Obviously, we could talk to the Conservation Commission prior, but that's how I've done a few articles in the past, so that way, both the town and the commission gets to say if that's what you guys would prefer.
What would your advice be on this, Mr. Fennessey?
Yeah, I would do it that way. I would do it in town meeting with the Conservation Commission overseeing the property.
Okay. Seems like we're good.
So, I make a motion that we accept the donation of land located at 56 Fosdick Road Assessor's Map, Map 57, Lot 2C.
Second that. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
I'm seeing your emails here about we did not do, or we don't think there's a need for a 21E Phase 1 environmental site assessment on the property?
Correct.
I guess my question to you is how, why not? And how do we protect ourselves from either getting land that might have a 21E issue on it?
Well, one of the things Gary Flaherty brought to me is a website from DEP that shows, you know, recent 21E filings, and there's nothing remotely nearby from this, from all the sort of points on the map where there have been previous 21Es. Said if it was active, it had been cleared, if, and we didn't walk the entire edge of the property, but it's for the most part treed, and I don't know what could have come to the property. You usually see those when there's an old gas station, or there's a lot of this in Plymouth with old mills and things like that, where there may be some residual from some historic use, but other than maybe bog iron on the maps, the bog iron, I don't really see any sort of risk, but obviously, if it's short money to do a 21E on the property, that answers the question.
Mr. Chair? If I could just add to what Mr. Bott said, so those DEP, those track, those released tracking numbers, they have a website that shows those released tracking numbers, and they go back decades. So, if it's not there, it's probably okay. I mean, they have places that have been defunct in Carver for years. They don't disappear. They just say it's been cleaned up. So, if it's not there, it's very unlikely.
Yeah, we could certainly find out what the cost of that would be.
Yeah.
Say, insurance policy.
Curious, yeah. Okay.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bott. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry, one last question. Does that fence come down now? You say there's a fence on the property that's not supposed to be there, or...
Yeah, so I can't say whose fence it is. There's a fence from 54 to 58 that joins in front of the property. You know, at some point, if it's going to be the town's property, we'd have to approach those two property owners and ask them to remove the fence. It's a chain link fence. The vinyl privacy fence appears to be not blocking that, but it's probably not a large issue to remove something like that physically. But I think if I lived next door to that and I had this piece of property next to me for all these years, and maybe people were hanging out in my side yard, I might have done something like that, just to make sure that I knew who was coming on the property, who wasn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bott.
And Mr. Chair, could I just add something?
Yes.
A lot of times, when you have a now entry like that, people don't even know that they think it's just their land, you know?
Sure.
And it's a pretty simple thing for the Conservation Commission to ask them to remove it and put up their own fence so that, you know, people don't do whatever they were doing.
Right. Okay. Moving right along, we have a select board policy update to the visitor's code of conduct. Mr. Fennessey, could you speak a little bit about why we need to upgrade this policy?
Yeah, so we needed to look at this in light of the recent Supreme Court decision that made it more difficult, really, to put requirements on people and how they can speak and so forth, and what they can do. So, Elaine initially made a new draft of the policy. It's basically still nuts and bolts, the same policy with some language change. From there, it went to Labor Council, and they made additional comments and changes. So, what you have in front of you now is the final product.
And I, just as far as your comments about the Supreme Court decision about what people could and could say, I would just point out that this board has always been very generous, I think, in allowing people to speak about various...
Correct, and a lot of towns...
We've not sought to limit in any way what people had to say.
A lot of towns still don't have any method of having a, like a citizen's participation process, so...
Okay. All right. Thank you. Questions from the board on this? Ms. Carter?
Sure. I guess I'm questioning why we're crossing off repeated violations may result in permanent suspension of facility privileges. It says may, so either we can or we can't, but this seems like we're saying we don't have that option.
Yeah, I think it's because it's a public building, and they have a right to go in a public building, so to have language that says that you'll be banned from a public building forever, you can't really do that, so...
Okay. And again, this has all been reviewed by council, and that the red, what's in red are their corrections. Correct, Mr. Fennessey?
Correct, from council.
Okay.
I'm sorry, yeah. From council is the blue ones.
Okay. Anything else from the board on this? Anyway, Mr. Ryan, did you have something? No?
No.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the updated visitor's code of conduct.
Second that. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Town administrator update. Mr. Fennessey?
Good evening. Okay, so I have a few updates. First, the Old Colony, the high school. On August 30th, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA, voted to approve Old Colony's advancement of the MSBA grant program, marking the start of the work on an anticipated feasibility study. May recall that the feasibility study was appropriated at town meeting through all the, all the member towns, passed that, up to $1 million, and then we had one share of that. So, the feasibility study is to look at whether they, it would behoove the district to build a new building or to do renovations to the current building and additions and so forth. So, that's moving forward, and Aaron Polansky had mentioned that people, if they're interested, can follow the process online at oldcolony.us/msbainformation. So, if you're interested in looking at it. We also received a resignation from Phil Shannon from North Carver Water District Commission. That's effective September 15th, 2023. He's moving out of town. Seems like an exodus of town of some officials. So, I want to send out a thank you to him for his service to the community, and if anybody's interested in applying for this position, please submit an application.
We'll get that posted on the website.
Yeah, that will be. And the last thing I have is on September 16th, 2023, there's a hazardous waste day for the residents of Wareham and Carver. So, household hazardous waste products and electronic collection will take place at the Wareham Municipal Maintenance Building at 95 Charge Pond Road, Wareham, Saturday, September 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. A valid transfer sticker is required to participate in the collection day event, and a list of what they will accept is on our website. This is now on the website. It's a flyer that they put out. It also will say what they will take, as well as what they can't take. And one of the common things that they mentioned was that latex paint. A lot of people go with buckets and buckets of latex paint. You can actually put kitty litter or something in that, let it harden, and you can throw it away in the trash, so that's not needed. So, they want to put that out front so people don't show up with all their paint, so... So, again, it's on Saturday, September 16th, 9 to 5, at 95 Charge Pond Road.
And people do need a transfer station sticker to participate in that.
They do. They do.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Fennessey.
Quick question.
Yes, Mr. Hoffman.
Is there a fee for that? Someone had asked.
There's no fee.
Okay, so as long as you have the sticker, you're all set?
Yep.
Okay.
You've already paid a fee.
Through the chair. I had a quick question, too. Back to the feasibility study, do you recall what our charge will be and how we're funding that and when that will hit us?
So, that was an article at town meeting.
We'll get an assessment, right? Yes.
I think it was a hundred grand, wasn't it? I think it was about a hundred grand.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're going to get...
So, that was already funded from the town meeting article.
Right, so it's already in our budget from one of the funds, so we expect it to be a hundred grand in this fiscal year.
Whatever it is, yeah, they were balancing out last time I recall on what our actual, I think they were waiting to see how many students we would have versus the other towns.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but we allotted up to $100,000.
Correct. It was up to 100.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there was an article at town meeting about that. Anything else? All right. Moving right along. Minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting, we have the minutes of August 15th, 2023. Is there a motion there?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of August 15th, 2023.
Did I, did I hear a second?
Yes.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. We have the executive session minutes of August 15th, 2023 for approval and release.
Make a motion to approve the executive session minutes.
I'll second that, too.
Approval and release, correct?
I'm sorry, approval and release, yeah.
And we have a second discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Let's see, we have a request from the Carver Cub Scouts to use Shertliff Park on September 23rd, 2023, from 9:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Motion to approve the use of the Shertliff Park by the Carver Cub Scouts on September 23rd between 9:30 and 2:00 p.m.
Second.[1675.57]